Mr. Baker.
Ready. Plan to be.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks everybody for coming out. We have a business meeting, but as a part of that, we do a lot of other exciting things that we do allow the public comment. As I guess everybody knows, those people who sign in, maybe say whatever they want, leave all their thoughts, we just can't have any dialogue and talk back with you. The rest of you are on the agenda and we can, so I think most of you understand that. I've got one sign in here and it says, "Herbie or Dana."
I'll do it.
Whoever's going to be the designated one.
Me.
Wait just a minute, I've got to handle myself. Wait just a minute, okay. Let's approve the minutes of August the 15th being placed first. Can I have a motion?
Yes.
Ms. Smith needs a motion?
Second.
And Mr. Baker second, is that all you have?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Well, again, we're here on the 20 and the 24 pay thing and we're against it. I mean, you know, I'm the only one in my family that's got an income coming in. I depend on that to pay my utilities and this and that. I mean, you take my payday and live on it by yourself. I mean, no way else bringing it in. Pay your bills with it and take a two, what is it, $200 and some dollar cut from it? Is that what it's going to have to be whenever they go to that 24 month pay or something? You know, that's electric bill or whatever, you know? That's a big cut taking out our checks and, you know, I'm making it, you know, let it go last versa. If they want it, let them have it, if they don't want it, let them have it, you know? But all these other drivers is against it just like I am. They need theirs just same way we do, I do.
All right, thank you. Thank you. Okay. Now Dana, is Dana going to speak or?
She is, she will.
Okay, so it's just her, okay. All right, so now we're going to go down under presentations and like I said, those people who sign in can speak to us and we can talk back and forth. Mrs. Sauer.
Good.
Mrs. Sauer, Director of Lincoln County High School.
I'll be going over this, but I want everybody to have a copy. That way you can take your time afterwards reading. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone here for opting in to address the board and to have a conversation with you. And that's why I want to be on the agenda as opposed to making comments, so we could talk to each other. And so with that, as you look while I'm handing out to you, there's some areas I want to address the board about, I have a concern about as far as what's taking place, and so I'll go through this, go on the record. For record, my name is Darren Sowers, I'm the Associate Studies Department Head at LCHS. I've taught in this county for the past 25 years as a teacher at Hart's High School, Duval High School, and LCHS. I'm here to express my concerns in regards to three areas that have an impact on students and employees of Lincoln County schools. Now, no one on the agenda, it mentions two. There is a second one there. Another one I've added with that is within these comments, I'll be brief about that. First area I want to look at is the Assistant Principal Vacancy at the high school. I believe our enrollment at the high school this year may be higher based on the number of new students that have been registered this time from what my conversations with counselors, what they've said and what is projected. Of course, that can change. And it's possible we'll have over 300 freshmen, ninth graders this year at the high school. That's a lot. So I understand that the current job description will be changed regarding to Assistant Principal Vacancy with some of his curriculum. We do have an Assistant Principal that's active with a policy 2510. Also, she builds the master schedule, student class schedules, makes those adjustments to class loads, moving students around. She goes to those meetings about curriculum and things that need to be there. I think she's well versed probably in it. She also takes care of A P courses that we have at the high school. I think we lost one this year because we didn't have enough students sign up for it. I currently teach one. All three Assistant Principals were involved in evaluations of teachers of related arts, content areas, and CTE. We had two that were responsible for ninth and 10th grade discipline, 11th and 12th grade discipline. They also supervise students during both lunch periods, attend I E P meetings along with our duties during the school year. I understand the curriculum is important, it certainly needs to be constantly examined to improve it in order to benefit our students. We have had four Assistant Principals, I believe, in the last two years that have moved on to other counties that have spent very little time at the high schools. We need an Assistant Principal who will be committed to LCHS and Lincoln County schools. I would like to see someone that would make that commitment and keep it. So that area of the Assistant Principal, that is my concern. I'd like to see the board hire someone that's going to make that commitment to us here in this county, not only to the staff at the high school, but to the students as well. Because every time you have a change, students have to adjust. And they have to adjust to another way it is, so everybody is different. And so I think it's important that we try to have some consistency in that position on behalf of the administration that we currently have there, Mr. Snyder, the other Assistant Principals, the teachers and the students, as well as custodians, anybody else that's involved, that the Assistant Principals have impact on. And that's my concern about the vacancy. I want to make sure that the board understands where, I believe, that we make sure that we have someone that's going to stay with us. I went to this county, graduated from it, lived in. This is my 26 year teaching. I'm committed to Lincoln County. I believe in this county. I have a love for it. I love the students in this county, that's why I'm standing here this evening, for it's the only reason. Because I think we need to watch right for them in that regard. Do I have any questions or comments from the board?
You want to talk about these each as we do?
Well, I don't want, I think if there's any comments, we don't need to go beyond that part, we may lose focus of that one tick of concern.
Okay, let's talk about that first then. I want to ask you a question.
Okay.
Are you happy with the student achievement at Lincoln County High School?
No, sir.
You are, okay. Well, I think that's the center, we haven't made any firm decisions on what we're going to do, but we're not a bit happy with it.
Right.
And, you know, I'm sure you all have looked at data there, consistency, this is a new, something new has been mentioned, but oftentimes that's not something that we have a control over. And we had two assistants that came from Boone County and they left, and oftentimes people leave, and, you know, because I agree with you, ideally you'd like to have people there, but our primary focus and what we've been doing is trying to look and see, how many years does the high school be up in now, seven or eight years?
Year now.
Nine, year now, right. But where have we scored? I'm just talking poorly here. Where have we scored in that period of time? You know, what are we doing? Has that been successful? You know, when we look at it, it doesn't seem to be successful. And I know that we've had, being a priority school, we have people that come in from the State Department and with recent, we have all these other people that come in, and I realize you all do many things there related to curriculum. Like you said, a lot of the staff do various things, but, and this is just me speaking here, I feel like we need somebody that's a specialist in that area that is going to come in and gives focus to everybody that's there. That's the way I feel about it. Now, but that's the reason I asked you, you know, because I'm sure you're not happy. I could, let me see, Jeff, have you shared, can you share with us any statistics on how our high school does in relation to some others, just some examples?
Well, first of all, I mean, the school was designated as a priority school in 2012.
Now explain what that means.
What that means is that the school was in the bottom 5% of state in performance on the West test. Specifically, Lincoln County High School, when measured up against all the other high schools in the state at that time, was the third lowest test scores in the state for that year. 16 out of all the schools in the state at every level. So because of the poor performance on the West test, that's what caused the distinction to be the designated school as a priority school.
Okay, all right. Mr. Curry, I know this is something that you, even prior to our last discussions, have you compared any of our ratios of administrators at our high school versus administrators at any other high school?
Yes.
Could you share some of those with us?
And I found out, found out of the 14 schools that I just randomly picked, there's only one school that got a lower ratio than we do, administrators to students. The largest high school in the state of West Virginia, their ratio is one administrator per 313 students. Ours is one administrator per 220 students. And Mr. McKibb's talking about, there's 113 high schools in the state of West Virginia. We're ranked 108. Now, that's getting low, so we feel like that we've got to do something. And I just don't think the number of students, I mean, I've got the whole list here and we're going to whack with all the other students, all the other schools, the number of administrators to students.
Okay. Well, I would, my one question there I have concern with, on these other high schools, is their vocational CTE connected with the high school or is it separate? There's several counties that have a completely separate complex of their vocational away from the high school, and at the vocational, they have possibly their own principal and possibly an assistant principal there. Now, does that within that ratio?
I understand that very well. I've never had any consideration. But actually, we don't have a four or five vocational place out. We've got auto mechanics, we've got agriculture, we've got welding, building construction, and...
We have nursing.
Well, that, these other schools have that too. Some of these schools have some vocational.
We have robotics.
Yep. So you're thinking, that's not a, but still, they've still got that number of students in the school, whether vocational there or out in the field someplace.
That's the point, regardless of what the responsibilities of those administrators are. When you compare the number of students that we have per administrator to, all these, not all, because all these are here, we have a very, very low number of students per administrator compared to most schools in the state.
All you have to do is get on the West Virginia Education website and hold it right there. I welcome you to do that.
I have a question for you, anybody can respond to this in regard to that. So with this consideration of what your discussion is about taking possession of the curriculum specials to address those areas of concern, parts of test scores, and where we are at, and I'm not happy with it, so I'll be honest with you. I've done everything I can to encourage students to work hard and try hard on the test like all the other teachers have. We try to come up with incentives to encourage them to do better, to make it important, make it count. So the board has a whole lean towards looking just at curriculum specialists, or are we still talking about one that will still have assistant principal duties as well as a focus on the curriculum? Or I'd like to know what direction the board is going in. Are we totally going away from having another assistant principal, or are you looking at one that is assistant principal slash curriculum specialist?
On our agenda, excuse me, later in our agenda, you'll see Mrs. Lucas has put on her, on her comments, we're going to, in other words, we haven't totally discussed this, that's what we're going to do now. But it does appear that this will be an assistant principal.
Okay.
Now, it may be a curriculum principal for curriculum, I don't know what the title's going to be, but the reason I say that, because as we've looked into this, we feel a more piece of this, is this administrator must be able to evaluate teachers, evaluate how they're doing curriculum wise, with their instructional practices, provide them with assistance wherever they can, provide them with improvement plans if they're needed, and that they would need to be an administrator in order to do that. So I'm kind of thinking that we're going to end up with somebody that will be called an assistant principal. Now, as far as how much duties they have that are non-curriculum related, you know, we haven't, we'll talk about that a little bit here later, but I would hope that they would be very, very limited. But once again, when we look at these numbers, one, we're all, you agree with, but we'll all say, we're not happy with achievement there. After eight years, we're not a bit happy with it. The state's not happy with it, no one is. And what Mr. McKibb has told us there, how we stand as a priority school, so we're all there, we know, we just feel like there's something has to be done differently. And if we use this assistant in a different manner, and we don't know how these, Mr. Curry mentioned, they may use their, some of their assistants in curriculum instruction, and they may not be doing just various administrative, we don't know that either. But if we take them out of the mix and make it very limited, we still think we're comparable to other high schools in the state as far as administrators and students, and we would have somebody that is a specialist in that area, that's, at least has a high degree of specialty anyway, and would be able to do some of the things we want.
All right. Well, you know, I understand as far as Assistant Principals, all of them should to a certain extent be able to address curriculum, evaluations, in the past they've done that, to go to the classrooms, see from their observations of what needs to be done, maybe corrections, improvements on that part. And my concern is, you know, I was afraid that it was going to totally get away from having one that would have Assistant Principals versus just Curriculum Specialists. You're saying there can be Assistant Principal, Curriculum Specialists, but you want them to be more focused on the curriculum, I understand that.
Well, I think also what we're leaning toward is this person we admire would probably in all reality take some of the work with some of the other assistants. Something there may be a doing now, this person might be doing that now, and so that would free them up for something now.
They might not have to do certain evaluations and all. Let me read something here that came from the State Board of Education.
Okay.
They recently had a report that was, I know we all got it through the system, but I'll just read just one paragraph here. But the title of it, "The Role of West Virginia School Principals Could Change." The report also suggests creating advanced specializations for principals that promote school improvement and providing school administrators with a slew of mentoring and support. I just now saw this, but...
I read that article as well.
And we came up with that before we ever saw this article.
This reinforces what we think, Darren.
Okay. I mean, I understand what you're saying there, Mr. Priestley, on that and everything, but I just feel like I need to, you know, my concerns is as far as students, you know, on that part of it. And when you have, I think there'll be 900 students everything, and they need to be supervised, as principals typically during lunch periods, that's what they are doing because of just the numbers, the sheer numbers of the ninth and 10th graders in the commons area and that area part of the school. There may be our staff members are on duty, but not, it's basically the principals are doing that, because that's here our lunch or they're in class, the rest is, you know...
Let me ask you, do you, as teachers, do you have any duties like that that are not instructional?
Well, as far as, my duties, we rotate my department as far as doing a morning duty.
What kind of duty is that?
Okay, we are to be on duty a certain part of schools at 7:40 till 8:10 every morning for a period of 25 days. We may be in the gym, in the commons area, in the academic area to monitor students as far as their behavior. They're not allowed down the CTE wing, or also to monitor on the backside where parents drop them off, that we monitor that where they're dropped off, for their safety. So we're spread out, usually seven or eight teachers from departments throughout the school in the morning. In the evening, we go to different parts of the school, most of it's outside, to be down the lower end, the vocational upper end, where the main entryway is along the walkway, maybe one out back watching, parents pick up students, to monitor them before they get on the bus, while they're getting on the bus, while they're waiting on the bus, just to make sure things stay safe, we don't have any issues with students, you know, while they're waiting on that. All departments do that throughout the course of the year, we do it on a rotation basis.
You all rotate?
We rotate that 25 days as typically what is, and we have rotation even as far as that goes. A lot of times my department has done it first. We're doing rotation, this year we're third, we'll be the third group, third department do that, and that's how it's operating on that. So we do that as far as teachers. Now, as far as my other duties, I'm department head, of course, we do meet, I don't have an A A, that's the time that we meet with Mr. Snyder or one of the Assistant Principals, and we have a discussion around curriculum, about things, issues, whatever's necessary, it's what's important that we may need to cover as a leadership team, things that we need to take maybe back to our departments on that. Then during our planning, we do what's called tardy sweeps on a plane period, we go out there first, five, 10 minutes, we do this to get the students to class on time. We started it last year as a suggestion of Mr. Wallace, our priority school contact. He thought this would be beneficial and helpful. It was effective. It's a point that we would escort some students to the class, they didn't really like that because it's just like, let me go to class, well, they may slow down, but when you're tackling the class, then you realize, I need to get the class on time because it's not fun anymore. So our tardies went down tremendously, and students, they got used to it, you know, on that part of it. So it did help.
Okay, so aside from the administrators, you all also assist in monitoring the school?
Monitoring the school, right, we do.
And also, we have a resource officer there, isn't he there all the time?
Unless he's in court or, I mean, you know what I'm saying, at least, he's there majority of the time.
We don't know, like some of the schools, Mr. Curry, we make reference to, we don't even know if they even have resource officers, they may or may not, but, you know, between the administrators that they are, the resource officers and the teachers that have to, you know, I've been there, we all have to pitch it to hell. You know, we think that we can handle that aspect of it. Let me just, I'm here, Mr. Baker had a question. I interrupted him while I was going. I'd like to tell him to speak.
No, I believe it's been answered. My question was going to be, do you not favor having someone that's focused on curriculum? And I mean, I think that's your position, you'd rather have someone that's a pure assistant principal, but clearly that isn't working.
Well, no, it's not really my position. I don't understand what your position is, Mr. Priestley, Mr. Curry, everything, as far as concern about the test scores and achievement, on that part of it. I'm not saying that we don't have that individual that has a good background in curriculum that can come in and give help to the teachers and the classrooms and that part, that where we'll be more successful, and there is that they may have expertise in it, whoever that might be. I just want to make sure that, you know, if they come in a capacity of just curriculum specialists, or they come in capacity as administrator with curriculum specialists on that part. You know, if you go in curriculum specialist then, as far as their administrative duties, I don't really see them there. That's, that was my concern, is that your question? I am concerned about curriculum, don't get me wrong. I am very concerned about the test scores. In fact, I mentioned the fact where we are ranked, I showed and shared that with students, I said, I know we're better than this. I know we're better than a lot of these schools, and you all going to do this and everything. I try to encourage them. I mean, when you put that up there, say, here we're at. Look at this school. I know we've got excellent students in this school, that you can outperform these students. You know, trying to encourage them to try harder on that test. And so I didn't spare any words with them, I just say, oh, no, I believe, that's what they could do, they have that capability. We have some excellent students at Lincoln County High School.
Why do you feel we need an assistant principal? Because of the number of the kids, or the discipline problem, or what?
Well, I think you still need assistant principal that can handle things when necessary, because, I'm giving, not saying this happens all the time, when you have some, there are pull for meetings, principal meetings or trainings, then we are down to maybe one or two for that school day on that. That is my concern about possible safety issues. I'm saying it would happen, I'm looking at that scenario, because we have had in the past that we've had up to three, all the time occasionally, have one assistant principal there for the entire school. So that's my concern about that. Yes, it's safety, you know, but yes, I am interested in curriculum. I'm not shortchanging that at all. You know, I think there has to be a balance, is why I'm saying on that. And that's why I'm addressing the board tonight, is a balance. And I can't see, I can't tell you curriculum's not important, but I can't tell you that also having a safe school is important on that aspect too as well. So I can do my job as teacher, so those students in the school can learn safely on that.
I think every one of us agree totally with you, that student safety is foremost a concern, and that's why we've tried to look at some statistics that would reflect that the number of administrators that many schools have, you know, are comparable or are much better than they are. And then when you, like I said, if you were all pitching in, the resource officer is, it seems like the safety part could be managed, because once again, that's first. But second is curriculum, and we're not doing well there at all.
Right.
Let me ask you, is anybody that, well, for labor this, because you've got two more topics, anybody care if you have?
I'd just like to say one more thing. There are two or three schools on here that I figure, and you were two if I told you who they were, that would have high discipline problems. They still got, we've still got far less students for administrator than they did.
Right.
That's all I have.
I think if you get on this site, this state website, you can bring each school up, and you can look, and some of them kind of, I know Fred and I, they kind of surprise you when you, when you look at them, because you would have thought that presentations aren't accurate, but that they would have had more administrators and all, but they don't really, it's not less than we had. All right, we all, you know, I think we're on the same page. Once again, here a little bit later, we'll talk about it some more.
Right.
And, but it seems that it's almost going to have to be an administrator and assistant principal, or else they won't be able to do the evaluation components. But, you know, I'm going to learn too here after a while a little bit more.
Okay.
Okay, now, you want to talk about it, or?
Just a moment. Some of the things you allude to here, like developing a master schedule, a student class schedule, evaluation of teachers and so forth.
Yes.
These things can, in most school systems, come under the direction of your curriculum specialists.
Right.
They would be handling that. And so it's not as if this is being taken away, this would actually be enhanced, so I want to make that clear.
Well, you know, I'll point that out just for the fact that they were, that we have an assistant principal that was taking care of that part of the aspect, as far as that, that's why I mentioned that on that, Mr. Wilkerson, on that part of it. But I understand, you know, what the board is saying here as far as curriculum specialists and your idea of it as well. I'm looking for that balance that I think needs to be there, and that's my contention. I am not discrediting the fact that what Mr. Curry, what you've said, Mr. Priestley, as far as the curriculum specialists are needed, and why you believe as a board that is needed there, but also I have to stand here tonight, this evening, and make you aware that we need to balance that with that assistant principal slash curriculum specialist, that we, if we go top favor of curriculum specialists and we don't have that administrative duty, and I'm not sure if that's what direction the board is going to go in, but that's why I'm here, because I felt like then we would possibly have some problems, because that individual would not have the authority to do anything. So that's, that's on that part, so...
Let's switch gears here, I think we're all on...
All right. Well, okay, the next one, it wasn't on there, but this, this is a problematic area that as a teacher I have dealt with in the past and several of the teachers have. And I know we have a system, but a lot of times our copiers, printers and other machines, sometimes they break parts on that wire and tariff. Yes, we have a lot of things to give out to students for its test information. And far as myself, where I teach APUS history, I require my students to have a three-ring binder, the only class really, because I have to give them so much information so they can get prepared for the test. Things that I need to make copies of on that. And if you don't have the capability, I'm just talking about myself, then it hampers me to give what I believe the students need, you know, for that course. But what, what I'm concerned about, we have a program. And it's, you know, it's a work where you sign in, you send in over here on that, what copier needs fixed, then you give a description of what the problem is, you know, where it's, you know, where it might be. And then that order is sent back to Mr. Gosney who takes care of it. Well, to give an example, last year, for some reason, that program, Harvard software or something, wasn't working. We had sent orders and orders and orders, then realized that there was a problem, issue with that, and it wasn't going through. But we're over there setting, no copiers. We had, at one point in one time, I believe, we had one copier and tar billion was working. Now, I did everything I could to avoid making copies of it to keep from it.
How do we stand today, copier?
Uh, I'm not really sure. I know the one in my playing area is, is jamming today. I couldn't locate the paper I could hear. I never could completely get to it.
It's in there somewhere.
You know, it's in there someplace. Usually you can find it, but on this one, I couldn't. There's some others, you can't physically use the feeder, like if you want to make multiple copies, say you have three pages. And you pull, you pull them in there, all three, and you get three copies, and you know, it's real easy to hand out instead of putting them all together. That copier, I don't think works in doing that. There's some, but you can still make copies. But if you have three pages, you're going to have to take one, two, three, and just manually pull them together and then staple them. Otherwise, you can just do it real quick. That's a time problem there, not the fact that you can't use it. The other copiers, I'm not, it goes up and down with them. I'll be quite honest with you.
Now, Mr. Gosney is on, at the school, correct?
Right.
So I mean, if you're not able to send a request to him, can't you kind of get him in the hall?
No, he can't.
Well, I mean, maybe he's not allowed to.
He's allowed to, that's the problem. Haven't you could tell him?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm believing... Why haven't you fixed my copier? Uh, he'll say, I haven't got the work order. I haven't got the paperwork. Well, you could see what's wrong with your head, doesn't matter. I mean, a few weeks or something. Well, see, that's, that's what happened last year on that part. We didn't, we didn't, at that time, we didn't know that it wasn't going through. The system, when you go online, there's a site, you know, login, everything, information, and then you put in what it is and everything, it's silver here. And then he gets the work order so he can work on that copier where it's ordered apart, see what's wrong with it or fix it. Well, you're talking about time. I mean, he might, where it's one day, two days, three days, but if he has the order apart, you're talking about a lot more time. That copier is down. It hampers instruction to a certain point. It doesn't stop.
We just don't understand why the...
Well, that is, well, because Mr. Gosney has told us, and it's his staff, that he, without that document, that work order, he can't touch them. Well, we understand that, but you see them in the hall every day, don't you? Yes, I do. Why don't you say, why won't you fix my copier?
Have you aggravated him enough he'll fix it?
Believe me, Mr. Gosney is a by the book person. I don't have the work order, I'm not going to touch it.
Did the system get fixed at some point last year so that he's getting the work order?
Uh, possibly at the end of the school year, it did. I'm not sure if it's working right now. I have made an attempt to send one in.
And you send the work order?
Through, online, you get online, there's a link on that, and you fill that out, and you send it over here. Mr. Mickivis or Ms. Lucas may be able to tell you more about what happens over here with it.
Yeah, Ms. Lucas, she can share with us.
Okay.
Well, I think this is the program that was coming directly to Mr. Daley. And if, if there was so much time going by and you were not getting results, I, I know, I see Mr. Gosney in here, or he could very well just pick the phone up and say, I have a group of teachers that are saying that this machine is down. Why is the request not there? Is there something wrong? Because I know he monitors that daily. And so I, I don't understand why someone there didn't just, or either Mr. Gosney's, you know, just picked the phone up and call Mr. Daley and say, they're saying that these work orders are not.
Well, I think that eventually happened, but until, until you realize that, you know, that's not working, that's, you know, in that particular instance, that's what happened there. You know, and the communication is, I'm looking at this, you know, what I'm concerned about here is the time element, being able to make the copies when we need to, for whatever reason it might be. I'm trying to streamline the process so teachers like myself are not aggravated with it. Mr. Gosney's aggravated with it because he feels like he can't do anything. I'm just looking for a solution on that. And may, this problem may work fine this year. But, you know, that's, that's what happened last year.
When the program's working, does the repair work?
I guess, as far as I know it does, Mr. Curry, on that part. You know, that's, that's the reason I bring it up. And I think this is a, this is an important concern because it's part of our instruction. It affects students, you know, on that part, otherwise I wouldn't mention it on that.
What I would suggest you do, get with Mr. Gosney, share with him, like when he sends it in. And if I feel like it's gone too long, I'm going to go to see Mr. Snyder. He's sitting back there in the back. He's the principal of the school. And I will say, Mr. Snyder, you know, we've gone through Mr. Gosney, it never seems to be a problem with the way these work orders get submitted. Could you help us? And you know, something I think Dana would help you.
Okay, that's, that's good. Well, I appreciate it, Mr. Priestley, because coming from the board tonight, he's heard that, I've heard this and everything. And I want to make it work. I want to make a good year for the teachers, for the students. And I think if we can eliminate this area, things will go smoother. And that's, that's my concern about that, on that part. I want to be able to give students what they need so they can learn, so we can improve the test scores and all those things on that part. And I think that's just part of it.
We, we got to make sure we communicate those.
Well, that's...
If Mr. Gosney doesn't know, and if Mr. Daley doesn't know, then I'm sure Mr...